Be called the Lord. We are a roll call in there.
Dr. Robinson, here.
Mr. West.
Here.
Dr. Bunce, here. Mrs. Ware.
Here.
Mr. James.
Here. All of them, where? Online. Okay. Adoption of the agenda, I have here to remove eight point seven. Change eight point nine to eight point one B. And then we will reset after five point five. So we can do five point six in the boardroom.
Okay, you have, you said eight point.
Remove eight point seven.
Right.
Eight point nine goes at eight point one B.
First for the presentation, okay, y'all has the personnel discussion, so we're going. Yeah, that'll be, yeah, okay. Thank you, say.
If there's something that you have.
Right, I do.
Okay, and then recess after five point five, so we can do five point six in the rest of the boardroom.
Okay.
So now we did adoption.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as amended.
Our second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. A roll call.
Dr. Robinson. Uh, Mr. West.
Aye.
Dr. Bunce.
Aye.
Mrs. Ware.
Ware.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye, aye, passes five zero. Okay, item number four, what would come in? Don't have any. Okay, five, recognition and presentation, five point one, Dr. Rev. Dr. Rev, five point one. Do you have it today? Number, this is a, ah, for you, for your art.
Board President James, members of the board, Superintendent Butcher, Deputy Superintendent McDonald, thank you all so much for allowing Morgantown Middle School to showcase our art from our students. And so behind you are just some of the pieces that our students have worked on. Also, an attendant is our art teacher. So, Ms. Wright, if you don't mind, would you please stand? Just, just standing. Oh, yeah, just standing. And again, thank you all so much for just allowing us this opportunity.
Oh, five point two. With the Butcher, number Butler, and Dr. Rev, who needs to. Five point two, this, Dr. Rev, this, Butler.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDonald, and everyone present. It is my esteemed honor to stand here and present a special certificate of recognition to this special young lady. Standard three, accountability standard three states. Student support services appraisal, academic, and/or personal advisement, and educational and/or career planning and referral are provided in each school by qualified student support personnel. This person is definitely a qualified support personnel. It is my honor to present this award to Ms. Monica King. At this time, we're going to ask Ms. King, who is a professional school counselor, to come forward. The Magnolia State Board of Directors is a nine-member working board that represents school counseling professionals from across the state of Mississippi. The board meets monthly, and each member undertakes numerous leadership tasks to advance the work of the association. Since Magnolia State, SCA, is the Mississippi affiliate of the American School Counselor Association, also known as ASCA, sometimes board members also work with ASCA staff and other school counseling leaders from across the U.S. to advance the counseling profession. Ms. King made application, her name was placed on a ballot, and through a majority vote, Ms. King was elected as a member of the nine-member working board for Magnolia State Board of Directors. Ms. King was elected to serve on the board, the voting was statewide, and Ms. King received a majority vote. She is one of three newly elected board members. I present to you our very honor from the southwestern portion of the state, Natches Adam School District, Ms. Monica King, who will serve on the nine-member board for Magnolia State Council.
All right, that's good.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. King. Thank you.
Job.
All right, I'll just say, sure, I'll just say to the board, thank you for always supporting school counselors. We appreciate you. Um, I plan to represent our school district and our state with excellence, and I just appreciate you having thanked me. How long? It's a three-year term. And my term starts July 1st, and we meet monthly. I don't know yet whether that is via Zoom, or it may be both, I'm not sure. But as soon as I know, I submit whatever I need to submit.
Okay.
I also want to acknowledge that Ms. Butler and Ms. McDonald were in campaign for me. And Ms. Mc, Ms. Butler sent word to all of the school district counselors so they would know to vote, because sometimes emails like that, you know, you'll kind of just scavenge on through them. And Ms. McDonald, Green even took the step of emailing some counselors in our neighboring districts, uh, some school districts to let them know that my name was on the ballot. So I know that I do our support, I would like to have this honor, so thank you.
All right. Now, these will have five point three and five point four by Mr. Moore. Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board, Butcher, Ms. McDonald, Green. We'd like to recognize those students who participated in the FCC LA competition in Jackson last month, as well as five point four, those who participated in TSA competition. Many of them are in regular activities, so they're not here today. But we'll call Kayla Levy, she won first place, the FCC LA competition, invited by Mo's skills category. Keandra Day. Tamia Johnson. Talisha Winchester. And Corelia Dangerfield. And TSA, five point four, Mr. James. Uh, we had several students, Mr. Fields, Ernest Fields, the four, won first place. I think we showed the video last month. We had William Johnson. Antoine Liddell. Tyrian Meredith. And of course, they wanted to recognize Mrs. Green and Mrs. Bell, all of the sponsors of TSA. But they all won first place, and I just left Mr. Fields, the four, who beat Donald Trump in the battle. Just to please something musical. I was just, when I first came in, I was talking, Ms. King, uh, talking in high school. And I'm telling you, she'll tell you, there you go. But I was trying to rub, but she had to say where I would have been, the way I was in school, I probably would have been Mississippi kind of changed. So she, she's so happy, okay, because I was.
Who was in there?
I was, I know she would have thought I was in there.
I said, who was in there to keep you out?
God, I had to play with it. I was rough, now I wasn't one of those bad, bad, you know, just.
Bad enough.
Bad enough. All, okay. Mr. Fields, we have the, with five point four. And then five point, no, five point, yeah, four, five, five. And then we'll.
Um, Mr. James, members of the board, the Mississippi Council of the National Council of Negro Women had a creative expression contest, this was a statewide contest, and our students made their submissions to this particular contest. And let me tell you, the Natches Adam School District represented, they showed out. They gave a presentation via Zoom, and all of them were on that, on that Zoom, and Natches Adam School District dominated the whole program. So at this time, we'd like to recognize all of those students. For first place in video, Natches High School, Ernest Fields, the four. For giving all the guy. All right, for first place in poem, Natches High School, Kayla Curtis. First place in poem, Natches High School, William Johnson. First place essay, Natches High School, Tyrian Meredith. And all of their presentations was about how COVID affected their everyday lives and at school. Second place essay, Kayden Alley. Third place essay, Natches High School, Antoine Liddell. First place art, Robert Lewis Magnet School, Jalen Williams. Third place art, from Robert Lewis Magnet School, Ian Harris. First place poem, Robert Lewis Magnet School, Kyra Cersey. Morgantown Middle School, third place in art, Zanaya Wilson.
She's here?
Yeah.
Come on, baby, we need. Turn around, hurt really quick. It's like, smile through the door, man. They can see it in your eyes.
First place video, Frasier Elementary, Michaela Hunt.
Come on, it's not getting off the video. Oh, okay. Good job, we're gonna look right at it.
Right here, right here.
Uh, second place essay, Frasier Elementary, Kenya Meredith. Uh, this student presented his essay online on the Zoom, it was fantastic. First place essay, Frasier Elementary, Caleb Logan. And third place for essay from Frasier Elementary, Chloe Mims.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're resetting, go.
Auto promotion, reset.
Second.
Ten minutes.
Okay, motion is made, and we are recessed for ten minutes. Roll call.
Dr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Dr. Bunce.
Aye.
Mrs. Ware. Mr. James.
Aye. So we're in recess.
Mr. James, I have a motion, we come out of recess, go back to red order.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Or we got to do a roll call?
Dr. Robinson. Aye. Mr. West.
Aye.
Dr. Bunce.
Aye.
Mrs. Ware.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye, it passes five zero. Okay. Now we will do five point six, Mr. Fields.
Thank you, Mr. James, and members of the board. For the thirty-nine weeks, about a total of eight hundred and two students who made the honor roll. Six hundred and fourteen of those students were principal scholars, and one hundred and eighty-eight were superintendent scholars. And we just want to take a little time here at the board meeting to recognize those superintendent scholars. All of them have been recognized at their individual schools with certificates. Uh, so we are very, very proud of them. Um, like I said, it's one hundred and eighty-eight of them, so I'm not going to be able to call them all by name, but we just want to let all those students know and their parents know how much we appreciate all of their hard work and working so hard and diligently to be on the superintendent's honor roll list. So at this time, those students online from Frasier Elementary School. Frasier Elementary School, let's see you guys. Turn those cameras on, give us a wave, from Frasier Elementary School.
Ain't nobody doing. Phone, see.
Let's give all of our students from Frasier a hand, please. Great job, you guys, great job, we appreciate you. Next, we have those superintendent scholars from McLaurin, McLaurin Elementary School. Let's see you guys, turn those cameras on, wave at us here in the boardroom. Great job, guys. West Elementary School Superintendent Scholar. Awesome, 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 we thank you guys, we appreciate you all, good job, guys. From the neighborhood, Morgantown Middle School. We salute you all, great job, Morgantown Middle School Superintendent Scholars. Robert Lewis Magnet School. Great job, guys, great job, wonderful. Superintendent Scholars from Natches Freshman Academy, Natches Freshman Academy. We are proud of you, Natches Freshman Academy. Natches High School. Great job, Natches High School, absolutely, good job. And last but certainly, not least, our superintendent scholars from Natches Early College at Colin. There you go. We see you guys, we see you all, we appreciate you, good job. Who was that? That was somebody we just saw on the top of the car. Good job, let's give all of our superintendent scholars a hand. Thank you.
And Mr. James, to maybe to try to increase the, the virtual presentation, when we will do next time for our next, uh, next time we honor these, uh, scholars, we will do maybe like a drawing for everybody who comes on, maybe they'll win a twenty-five dollar gift certificate or something like that, maybe we'll try, try to increase the participation, but by school, not by category, by school.
Got it, I love it.
Okay. Okay, now, with item number six. Approve of minutes, approve of March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, regular meeting minutes. And approve of April the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, special call meeting minutes. Can I get approved?
I move for, uh, March twenty-ninth, April thirteenth, April thirteenth, and. What's the other? Okay.
I said.
Minutes, yeah.
Okay, it's been moved in second, our roll call.
Dr. Robinson. Aye. Mr. West.
Aye.
Dr. Bunce.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye.
And Mrs. Ware.
Aye.
All right, it passes five zero. Okay, now we're at item number seven, approve of consent items. Is there anything in consent items that a boardroom would like to move, or the superintendent, the superintendent like to move, action items? Now. Can we get approved?
Chair, I move that we approve all the consent items.
Second.
Dr. Bunce, move that we approve all consent items, second by Dr. Robinson, roll call.
Dr. Robinson. Aye. Mr. West.
Aye.
Ms. Dr. Bunce.
Aye.
Mrs. Ware.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye, it passes five zero. Okay. Where they going? Oh, now. All right. Item number eight, approve of action items. Eight point one, approve of personnel reports, make it says this. And eight point one B is approve of person recommendation, recommendation. I can say we're on table there, I guess. I mean, I tell you, move to.
Move to, that's it.
Okay, can I move?
I still move.
Okay, it's moved by Mr. Ware, second by Mrs. Ware. That we, uh, move personnel recommendation, eight point one, to the executive session, roll call.
Dr. Robinson. Aye. Mr. West.
Aye.
Dr. Bunce.
Aye.
Mrs. Ware.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye, it passes five point zero. Okay. Eight point two. Ms. Wiley, pass it.
She's all right.
Good evening, Mr. James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher. Ms. McDonald, Green, I'm presenting to you the approval of the project's first instructor job description. This is for our new program that we admire, this is the job description that is provided by, um, the Mississippi Department of Arts Rehabilitation, and is used for their other instructors, um, in the program, um, in this.
Okay, and what? Now, any questions, can we approve?
Auto, auto promotion, we approve the job description.
Second. Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Mr. West. And second by Dr. Bunce, that we approve, uh, eight point two. Roll call.
Dr. Robinson. Aye. Mr. West.
Aye.
Dr. Bunce.
Aye.
Mrs. Ware.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye, it passes five zero. Eight point, eight point three, is the highest.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDonald, Green, Mr. Bruce. Item eight point three, permission to advertise for bids on Sixteenth Section land, section fifty-one, Township Seven North, Range One West, three hundred forty-nine point thirty-four acres. Background information, the above-mentioned lease will expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Administrative consideration, we requesting permission from the school board to advertise for bids on the above-sixteenth section land that is used for hunting and fishing. The superintendent's recommendation is recommended that the school board grant permission to advertise for bids on the above-sixteenth section land. Any questions?
You seen this first?
I've seen the proposal, but I don't recall what the current bid is, and who the current listing is.
Uh, I don't remember, uh, current DC. Uh, Joseph, not Joseph, I think it's Joseph Sue.
Sue.
Yeah.
Well, you seen the proposal that's going to be.
Yes.
Available.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
Auto promotion, we approve the, uh, request to advertise for the section of land in Sixteenth Section land, for bids.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. It's been motioned by Mr. West, seven bound. Dr. Bunce, it will approve item eight point three. Roll call.
Dr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Dr. Bunce.
Aye.
Mrs. Ware. Mrs. Ware. Mr. James.
Aye, it passes four zero. Okay, eight point four.
Mr. James, members of the board, eight point four is the request to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three student dress code. Uh, N H C policy, J C D B, outlines that the board each year will ensure that there is a uniform, uniformed guidelines for student dress. And so the dress code that you have before you, or the dress guidelines that you have before you, are the same as we have this year, based upon feedback that we've had from administrators in the building. We did not have any major issues with, um, dress code. And so it is the superintendent's recommendation that you approve the dress guidelines for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school.
So move.
Our second, Mr. Jimmy.
It's been moved by Dr. Robinson, second by Mr. West, in discussion. There's no discussion, can we have our roll call?
Dr. Robinson. Uh, Mr. West.
Aye.
Dr. Bunce.
Aye.
Mrs. Ware. Mr. James.
Aye, it passes four zero.
I noticed that was a fact, but that's very, it's very detailed, I mean, I've seen, I looked at that and say, good gracious.
And also.
Even being that detailed, some parents, some students find that cold.
Can I get a, a hard copy of that? Anybody?
Yeah, me too.
But give everybody a hard copy of this. All right, eight point five.
Eight point five. Each year, the board reviews the discipline matrix for elementary and secondary levels. There are two. They are two, uh, different matrices. One is for elementary, uh, grades eight to five. And then there's a second one that is for grade six to twelve. And so again, these, uh, the matrices were reviewed by school administrators, uh, to provide feedback on suggested, uh, changes or revisions, uh, to the matrices, and that is what you have presented before you. Uh, so it is the recommendation of the superintendent that you approve the discipline matrices for an upcoming school year.
Let me ask one question.
Yes, sir.
Are we gonna make sure that all of the parents receive a copy or other person, person receives a copy of this?
What we do is we make, uh, hard copies available at the campuses. Uh, we don't do one for every student. We make some available, but at any time that the parents request, and we've had in the past parents who request, they are provided copies of those discipline matrices, and they are posted on the district website. And I do need to make a correction. You're only approving discipline matrices. I think the cover sheet says handbooks, but the handbooks have not been presented this, uh, this session.
Okay. Can we get approved?
Mr. Chairman, we approve the, um, updated, uh, disciplinary matrix.
Okay.
Our seventh.
Motion was made by Dr. Bunt, second by Mr. West. The eight point five, elementary and secondary district, discipline matrix, all in paper.
Aye.
All in paper. Can I get a copy? But give us all a hard copy of that.
Yes, sir.
Is it in, uh, I know it's, uh, we can send a sheet of paper, just one sheet saying if you request. So we've been covered outside of here, this is what I did.
We also agree that if we give a sign, people probably will give me the back, give the parents a sign, it also.
All that over.
And we'll go on and add a, make up maybe, put some connection, so if they request, if they just come, sometimes parents come to, come there and run in and get one of these.
Okay, eight point six.
Eight point six, Mr. James, members of the board, is the request to approve extended school year and summer learning for this, uh, upcoming, uh, summer session. The extended school year services will be provided for students and special services for those students who have not, uh, met their goals under their IMP. Uh, we will provide summer learning opportunities for all students in Natchez Adams School District, uh, to try to address, uh, accelerated learning and learning loss. And additional will also offer, uh, summer school for those students in the upper grade secondary who need to recover credits. And so it is the recommendation that the board approves extended school year and summer learning opportunities.
So let me ask you this, because I've heard people talk, um, Ms. McDonald-Wing about, they say, you know, you're, you're, are, are we going around the clock? I mean, everyone's saying we're going, you know.
Year round.
Year round, twelve months out of the year. That's kind of the rumor that I've heard in the community. And I have said to them, no, this has to do with COVID. Is that correct?
The extended summer, summer year, this is what's pre-COVID. We were offering these opportunities for students.
Okay, but it's an opportunity for enhancement.
Yes.
It is not a requirement.
No, it is not.
But, uh, in addition to that, Dr. Bunt, what we're really asking ours, at each of our elementary schools, we really need them to promote that among the second and third graders because of the fact that the second and third graders, some of those students in that have the benefit of, when the kids start or whatever the case is. And most of you know right now, uh, how head start is, uh, is very challenging. So when we're, we're talking to Ms. Morris and her department about the possibility of trying to bring those kindergarten students in because we will have students coming to kindergarten this year who have never really set in, correct me if I'm wrong, who have really never set in a classroom. So, you know, our work is going to really be cut out because that means that in other places where there are head starts, that our students are going to be behind it. So we hopefully, what we hope, six weeks? We're going.
Sir?
We're going four weeks, six weeks?
Four.
Four weeks. But, uh, we are hoping that during that four week period of time, we can at least establish some routine with kindergarten students. But, uh, we, uh, you know, like I told you in the last meeting, we're in the process of writing a letter, uh, to, uh, the regional, uh, area, uh, office, which is a man, because of the fact that, you know, when we don't, when we fail to have head start, it affects everything.
And also, have you had some commu, have you had, uh, some communications with the MAP people who are over the program that is.
Mr. West, we have had. Right, we have had communication. I think the, uh, two or three groups here in town have had communication. We just seem to be, we logged into the rest of announcements right now. Every time you say this, say that, you remember. Back in, uh, I think February, I brought to the board, they wanted us to feed students. And once we contacted Miss Fields, she contacted her supervisor and, and the Jackson, that was a problem. Then they backed off of that. We just, uh, right now, we can't, uh, say what somebody is not doing. I'm, what I'm trying to do, what we're trying to do right now is make sure that we fill the gap the best we can because our kindergarten teachers, they will be really having challenging tasks this coming school year.
So right now, we don't have a definitive time that they've given to us in terms of when they're gonna give back to form their start.
Not to mind, I was, Ms. Morris has been the lead person here.
They were supposed to have gone back into the building today. I got word today, they did not do that. So we don't.
Cause I had heard that.
Yeah. So they did not, that did not take place.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're really truly, Mr. West, we just don't know what's going on. So we are working now on getting all those incoming kindergarten parents registered on the twenty-eighth of this month. So we can get them in for the summer to work with them.
Also tell about the piece whereby they're coming to register kindergarten, you won't have them have to do a registration. When to come back to register again?
Right. So we'll, we'll secure the safe room on the twenty-eighth of this month for parents to come in to register, not only for the summer camp that we're gonna have for kind, incoming kindergartens, but they will also be able to register for the incoming school year. So it's, you know, double, uh, registration.
Do you have any, uh, possible, no, ideas to how many children would possibly be talking about?
I can only tell you from, uh, the last meeting we had, uh, with, uh, Ms. Jackson, who was at MAP. She said they will be sending us a hundred and twelve students transitioning from there. But we also know that some of those students went into daycares. So we are also communicating with the daycares as well.
And that number of hundred and twelve, Mr. West, we, at one time, I think they say, what, one seventy-two?
Yes.
Then we went down to another number and another number. So really, in reality, if we know it's somewhere between seventy-five and eighty students, but we hope that we can pick back up to our regular number. But at any rate, there has to be some intensive effort made to fill that gap. And I think that when we have intercession, uh, we'll probably bring you some problems whereby we need to require those students to come to intercession because even so, we cannot fill a gap for nine months if something happens.
If we would go through year round, that would have to come through the state.
It just does, right?
The state regulations require that schools operate one hundred and eighty, eighty days of instruction. Anything beyond that would be a school board decision.
Okay. But do you anticipate that the state might look at a year round?
At one time, that there was, there's some discussion that the state legislature, uh, legislators towards, we're going to provide monies for schools to look into year-round programming. However, that did not pass this current session. Uh, there are several, uh, school districts across the state who are, uh, using similar, operating on similar calendars as ours. We know that the Collin School District is the first school district in the state who went to a year-round calendar. Uh, I think if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Fields, help me out, uh, not too long.
Start with the year round.
On the coast.
On the coast, I know the question.
And it's really not a year round, it's a flexible calendar.
It's a flexible calendar. I guess what people get, uh, logged out is, is the earlier start time. Uh, that is one of the, uh, uh, some of the feedback that we've received. We're only starting this year approximately four days earlier than we did this school year. This school year, we started on the second. This upcoming school year, we started on July twenty-eighth. We are just redistributing the amount of time that we are allotted. We've not added additional, uh, days in the schedule. It's still one hundred and eighty instructional days. We have just repurposed how we are using those off days. And so again, the goal is to, uh, support students. And we all know that working nine months with students and then working with those students who did not meet mastery for four to six weeks in the summer may not be the most effective way of addressing, uh, concerns about, uh, learning gains. So instead, we are working to make sure that we are working with students throughout the school year. So at the end of the first nine weeks, teachers are already aware of students who, who need that additional support. Right after that nine weeks, we go to another additional week of instruction.
But we're keeping our eye on some of these ones that I'm, I'm using them as sort of experiments.
Almost certainly.
And how, and if their test scores and things go up.
Most certainly.
How we might be able to rethink.
We're looking at that, but also we have to bal, balance out from that the demo, the demographics.
Absolutely.
Because whether or not their demographics are similar to ours. And so, yeah, that's, that's something different. And, uh, we will bring to you, uh, very soon data from the intercessions to show you the number of students that they've served, uh, the gains that were, were made during those intercessions.
I'd also like to hear if y'all can find information from the coast, uh, even if, you know, a different demographic, what it did and what their evaluation is of that year-round schedule.
You know, I think when we bring you the data from the, uh, intercession, I think you'll be pleased with most of it. We will be pleased with most of it. As, as, as anything, you know, there's some thoughts, parts we need to work on. But I, I think that you'll be pleased with that information. Just in our two years, twenty times, we've moved it private.
And we received really good feedback, uh, from our community stakeholders, uh, when they were looking at the calendar. Because we posted it out there for, uh, feedback. A lot of the feedback was very positive, especially about supporting students throughout the school year. There were concerns regarding early start times, uh, uh, some people wanted to have intercession right after the Christmas break. But based upon, uh, feedback that we received from the teachers who were in the building at that time, that may not have been the best time to offer intercession coming out of the spring break. And so that's the type of, uh, uh, data we would use in order to design this calendar.
I think that's right. I think data that shows how it's affecting our school in particular is the kind of data that, you know, that we need to make that decision.
Last week, last year, what happened?
Four.
You'll score that.
No. Or intercession. For the summer? Four.
Four year.
Are instructors, um, compensated for additional time?
Yes.
Yeah, but the, uh, this past year, the board graciously approved, uh, a very reasonable, uh, hourly amount.
And so what we'll present to you on that report, Mrs. Ware and other members of the board, we broke down the number of certified teachers that we used and the amount that they were compensated, uh, and the number of paraprofessionals, and number of exceptional ed, uh, counselors, and, uh, security. So you'll have that breakdown, the number of students that were served. And we also broke it down based upon what we spent, including transportation, approximately how much we spent per student, uh, for that, uh, that session.
So it's a complete breakdown.
Yes.
It did come out of, yes, the funds, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Uh, I, I just wanted to bring up that, uh, I had two that attended the summer thing and, uh, and it works. I think the way that they explained it to me and my grandkids was the first two weeks was like bringing you up on the things that you really needed to know. And the next two weeks, it was like we lost, we learned new stuff. It's getting you ready for the next grade. And, uh, and when he told me, he said, uh, well, he said, I, I don't like it. And I said, well, why? He said, because when you get in there, you work all the way through. Until it comes to like, you just work, work, work. I said, well, I like. So what I'm saying is not, it's not playtime. It's, it's work. Anytime a child come to you that they work, 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 doesn't mean it's working.
And you'll also have a breakdown with the bus schedules and how many buses are running.
Oh, yes. The, the number of, uh, well, what we provided were, uh, um, the number of, how much we paid for transportation. But you need to know the number of rides we can do there. Echo rides are awesome. We provided that information for us.
Kids know we're gonna put application out for our teachers pretty soon because we're trying to have everything in place, the schedules, the schools, the bills, the transportation. We try to have everything in place at least two weeks prior to school being out. So, you know, those persons who's working is gonna get started, and they'll give us some little time off every time.
Okay. Can we approve? No, we're waiting to approve.
We're waiting.
So, yeah, we need.
What's the motion?
Yeah, we need a motion. Mr. West, you need to make a motion. You started the session.
Okay, I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. West, make the motion. Can we get a second?
Second.
Then move that second. Oh, it's paper. Aye. It's five, okay. Eight point seven now, that's. I think that'll log.
Eight point seven, twenty.
We should raise that. That's right. We moved that.
I thought you were moving eight point.
Seven.
We moved that to eight.
All right, eight point eight.
Okay, eight point eight. Mr. James, members of the board, when we were representing, because I think it made a recommendation for the last, uh, three or four summers whereby we would go to a four-day work week. And the brave staff would also go there, four-day work week, working, uh, minimum ten hours a day.
So move.
Second.
We're moving a second on the coast. Aye. Eight point nine, which was eight point ten, uh, Coach Moore?
Uh, I'll present for Coach Moore, uh, Mr. James, members of the board. You have before you eight point nine, which is the approval of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three band, dance, and color card constitution. And so what they have outlined for are the expectations. You don't have.
It was emailed through. They don't have to do this email.
Okay. Okay.
Which outlines the expectations for those students who participate in those auxiliary activities. It outlines the academic expectations. All students have, are required to maintain a minimal, uh, acceptance in all classes. Uh, if they do not, they're placed on probationary status. It outlines the expectations for behavior. Uh, they're, they are student athletes, but there is a high standard of, uh, expectation when it comes to behavior, no profanity, um, hold your social media presence, uh, integrity and so forth. And so that constitution outlines exactly what's expected, as well as for parents. Uh, understanding that as parents, they are there to support their children, but we also have to support the program. There is a grievous process that's in place, um, with the chain of command. But also understanding that there's a code of conduct when it comes to how, uh, parents interact with coaches and the administrative staff. So it is a request, recommendation of the superintendent that the board approves that constitution.
Question. What's the difference in what we are being asked to approve today versus what we've had in previous years?
There's, uh, no differences in the past. I don't believe we've, uh, approved, you've approved constitutions. And so we want to make certain that it goes through board approval because there becomes, it has become sometimes contentious.
Correct.
So we want to make certain that on the front end, we outline those and that it's board approval.
Do parents sign something?
Now, now, you know, we're gonna have parents to sign off on it. So when they call, you do a send them back to the document because, you know, this has been a battle we've been fighting right now. We have, we have to filter more questions for extracurricular activities than we have to do with academics. And we're supposed to be all about academics, but we have parents to sign off. Now, when parents fail to sign off, we'll just have the child sign off that he picked it up, and if you don't make it home, then you're gonna be on.
Well, let me ask you this. Does this have, uh, any relationship, not relationship? Is this similar to other policies of this nature in other school districts?
I can't answer that. I can't answer that, but, and it, although it might not be similar to other policies of the school, if they correct the procedure. But, you know, I think we had a point whereby we have to do reticulamates for what's affecting for our school, just, just, you know.
Well, I don't have a problem with that. I just know that when we have these kinds of questions about these kinds of areas, you know, that, uh, a lot of times it's something that we are hopeful that won't be brought to us. Because of people's concern, we want to make sure that whatever we do is, uh, and that is put in such a way that it will limit the kinds of concerns or complaints or whatever the case may be regarding this. And, and so this is something basically new that's evidently been drafted by one person?
It's not new. They've had the bylaws and constitutions in previous years as, as well. Um, this time, the only difference is we're bringing it before you for board approval so that everybody's aware of what these expectations are. These things are in line with the Mississippi High School Association. Uh, I think, again, it outlines your academic expectations. It outlines your, your performance. The only difference is one, one thing that was added this school year, uh, if you are aware, there was some issues regarding boosters.
Right.
And so one of the requirements is that participants in these extracurricular reglars, uh, the parents are requested to, uh, become a part of the band. uh the parents are requested to uh become a part of the band booster, which is not uh in a separate form. Uh as you uh can recall, that we had some issues with this past school.
Yeah, we also had an issue with uh sometimes if the parent was not conducting themselves properly, then we need to consider, we considered, at least we discussed the possibility of punishing the child versus not. Okay, so is that a part of this particular?
Yes, it is.
So so it it is in terms of what it is?
Yes, it is, that the parent is uh uh made aware that there's an expectation that uh the use of profanity towards coaches and administrative staffs will not be tolerated. Uh if there is a a pattern of behavior, there's a possibility that students and parents will be removed. And that's in alignment with the Mississippi High School Association.
So in other words, you're saying that we now we we are adopting a position that if a parent could be uh can do the wrong thing and then and then the child will can can be punished as a result of what the action of the parent.
Yes, sir. And that's nothing, you know, and you, none of this is new, Mr. West. You know, I'm sure that I led the record for twelve or thirteen years. But we had some of these same kinds of policies in place then, you know, but I think parents are a lot more, um everybody is more than working, you know.
Yes, sir.
But up in North Mississippi this past year, there were very instances where my parents actually came home to court. Boy in basketball, I think, and football actually came home to court. So as a result, the Mississippi High School Association is suspending both the parent and the and the child. Being the parent coming to the gym and the child suspended from participating. Because when we have things of that particular nature, conduct of that particular nature, it jeopardize everybody else's child. You know, you might be looking out or trying to invest, look out for your child, but we got all the cheering that we get a melee all going there, you know.
Well, I understand. I just disagree. You know, that's all. Because I believe in the constitutional way, if somebody commits an offense, somebody else who didn't commit the offense shouldn't be punished for it. That's my philosophy.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that uh we will approve this new constitution as written. That's.
Moving the second of the discussion. On this thing. Mr. West?
No.
Can can we get a copy of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have to read this.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Uh Mr. West, if I may, most of the bus drivers up here, we sort of make their presentation to them. And they've had a long holiday. If if there would be uh, okay, the board.
Sir.
You may be. Yeah, that's the move of all the.
Mr. James, members of the board, uh we have certificates of recognition for uh our transportation department and recognition for being a professional bus driver who has participated in the bus evacuation drills over the past few years and ensuring our students are safe every day. We appreciate uh everything that you all do for other boys and girls of Adams County. But this time, I want to recognize Ernestine Banks, Cynthia Bland, Felicia Booker, Sandra Brown, Joyce Bird, Benny Campbell, Ronaldo Coach, Pamela Dean. Pamela Dean is here. Come on. Yes, the dean. Come on up. So glad you did it, Dean.
Okay. Thank you.
And we appreciate all the hard work you're in the morning and the late afternoon.
Thank you.
I wish somebody said, you right, huh?
Cheryl Farrell, Sarah Furley, Delores Ford, Tanya Franklin.
Greatly. We appreciate you, okay?
Thank you.
You got the camera right there. Save money.
Early Gaines.
Gaines, how you doing? We appreciate all your hard work, okay? Everybody down to get the camera right there. Thank you, man. We appreciate you.
Donna Gaylor, Cheryl Gooden, James Hayes, Stephanie Hicks, Elto Hunter, Gloria Ivory, Jeremy Jackson.
Oh, Jim.
Mary Jackson.
Jackie, you want to say you're right too, huh?
Yes, thank you.
And we appreciate you.
Okay. Thank you all.
Richard Jacobson. Trellis Jay. Oh, yes, sir. Did I pronounce your name right, sir?
All right.
Yes, sir.
Good Lord, sir. Congratulations to you. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
He had the right hat on too.
Trellis Jay, Angela Johnson, Perlela Johnson, Theodora Johnson, Kareen Jones, Melinda Jones, Shemika Knight, Carrie Landry. Oh, Carrie, Carrie Landry. Yolanda Lyles, Keith Matthews, Henry Morgan, Fannie Murray. All right, Mary, Mary, Mary.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take a picture of you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. All right.
Charlotte Payne, Minerva Pickett, Gregory Pierce, Rita Scott, Felicia Shannon, Carolyn Shelton, Mary Sprouse, Willie Strong, Johnny Thompson, Jerica Watkins, LaShila Wesley.
And we appreciate you, all your hard work, okay? You know, sharing that bus is not beating the class over there.
Lena Wilson. Valerie Wimbley, Mary Woods, and the spokesperson for all bus drivers international, Gregory West.
Well, we can't find nobody to go on the trip. We can all count on Mr. West. Thank you, sir. Mr. West, would you be kind enough also to make sure that these are delivered to the person who I knew? I just tell them this is grand celebration. If everybody had to meet him, we might have given him a raise, so.
Well, you're standing in the hallway. You might want to have one. Mr. Washington.
Mr. Washington?
Okay.
Okay.
This is uh active and general manager.
Okay. I'm fine, Mr. Washington. How you doing, sir? All right. I met Mr. Washington, went went over to uh maintenance to uh talk to him this late and he seemed to just do it himself. And the weather's bad everywhere since then, so. So hopefully this will be good. Mr. Washington, everything you got to say?
Yeah, I just want to say, of course, we appreciate all the hard work that our employees, our drivers, uh that we do on behalf of the community in Chief District. And we definitely appreciate Chief District to partner with us to do the work that we do. And we're just so grateful for all our drivers and all that go here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One question. Just what? How many bus drivers do you have?
Uh we currently, we're giving it. Yeah, about six people.
Okay.
I I just want to say I thank you all for what you all do. I tell Mr. Butcher, I tell you all the time, when the weather's bad, I tell Mr. Butcher, I say, don't just think about students. I want all the bus drivers to get home too. So when you say we're gonna cancel, we're gonna shut school down, you put enough time in there for them to drop their kids off and get to their doorstep. I always did.
You know, Mr. James, I have a brother state in Minnesota. He called me uh one day last week. He said, Fred, we have nine buses and we need to move them. Thankfully, we invited all the buses, but you know, he didn't say what. When he gets to thirty-five or forty miles per hour, then the bus will top it over. So we try to take that.
Standing with Bush. We were breaking down this butler.
Sure.
Standard thirty-nine of the accountability standards.
Yeah.
Requires that two uh bus evacuation drills are uh conducted each year. I've been in this position a little over eight years. These drivers conduct some of the best drills I have ever seen. They go script by script, word uh word by word, and they are so patient with those children. So I really wanted to applaud them and say thank you so much for ensuring that you bring our children to school safely every day and take them home every day. And and everything I've seen over these past years, esp- especially these past four years, not counting COVID, you all have been exemplary in your bus evacuation drills. So Greg, everyone in here, all of your colleagues, please tell them they are truly appreciated.
At lunch, I'll miss Butcher the next time.
All right, Mr. West. All right. Thank you all for coming if you want to stay fine or go home after a long day. Man, I know. I ain't know. You can handle it.
Been having it for what, twenty, almost thirty years? I'm willing to retire.
Know it quiet on your. That's my last day, I know.
I ain't now, I'm gonna say, oh, damn. I try to be good, man, though.
Don't don't run them kids out the window now like you did.
I ain't gonna do that.
You threw a guy out the window. At the school over there, sound that. He kept talking. She grabbed him from the fountain once. It ate his dick. Okay. All right. Now, we have we have nine point one. Mr. Berry?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Included in your board packet is the March financial report. I would like to pause and see if there were any questions from the review.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nine point two is meant for.
Nine point two more uh is the thirty day review of policies. Thankfully, we are rounding out the policy sections for this school term. So you have uh before you, we present policy G D A V, which is a new policy, employer housing program. Uh we have a number of employees now. The Mississippi Department of Education now allows districts to partner with uh educators. Uh they receive uh a a a amount of like six thousand dollars towards the purchase of a home or their of a personal home. And so we need a policy in place to uh address that. Uh I don't believe there is any financial uh contributions directly from us, but we are, because we are a flow-through uh en- entity, we do have to sign the documents saying that they are employed with the school district. And they are required to remain employed with the school district, I believe, for a term of three, three years.
Yeah, I think this year alone is signed, I think, three.
And the board, you know, I want to remind you, our board retreat, that's when you bring all the policies that you have looked over and you might want to change or tweak. And you should have a list of everything you want. Finding, just anything, you know. You have the list, that's what you talk about.
But these funds come from the state.
Yes, yes.
Don't forget to have your list for whenever that board.
Policy I N C is extended learning opportunities. This is a policy that we need in place. It's a new policy for Mr. uh Moore's program dealing with workforce learning, uh to ensure that the district has a policy in place that says that they allow students to participate in workforce learning. And then we're going to uh review section J, which is the student section, and there are no requests or revisions to that section.
Anything else?
Anyway, just from Mr. Moore's uh program that we're basically, Mr. Moore, you have, we got a hundred, how many students working in your program? A hundred and ten. We got a hundred and ten students working through the state, so we got to give them some help over there. So we, he's in fact, we're making predictions for that, but so, and I told her, we, you know, get it from a, if I have that hundred and ten, I have to go to at least a hundred and forty.
All right.
Yes, sir.
I mean, now, we would have our. Technology update.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Before you, you have the uh technology mother report. Do you have any questions?
Uh maybe you and Mr. Butcher can answer it. For the com- uh what you call them books, man?
Chromebook.
Chromebooks, we have, do we have the, I think you said we're gonna get some carts or something to slack, put them.
We do.
To store me?
Yes, we do.
The extra ones.
Store in charge, yes.
We already have.
But we have that in classrooms too, charging station.
Yes.
In some of the classrooms. But I know I'm just saying the extra ones. And can you give us a count on how many extra ones?
Well, Tennessee, give us a count on the extra Chromebooks, will you please, that's up for you. Turn it to me.
Two hundred.
Turn it, turn it. Send it, send it to me today so we can send all out, okay? On a sheet of paper.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um I was, I was reading this, and it may just be a typo. So it's ten hotspots for teacher or teachers?
Uh teacher, for the teachers at the high school. Uh when they move from the right side of the building to the left side of the building, uh uh technology is not ready for that side of the building yet.
Okay, got it.
Because of COVID. All our, everything we're trying to ship in hasn't arrived yet. So I I got hotspots for them to to allow them to be on the internet until we get that equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tennessee.
You're welcome.
All right. Nine point four federal program, Mr. Thomas?
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDonald, Brain. Before you, you have the federal program, episode one, two, and three overdue for the month of March. Are there any questions?
No. I don't have any. And also, like I said again, anything that you need elsewhere, I still have board retreat. It's hard enough to be there too. Anything, because they all got to come see us anyway. They also the business manager and all that. Okay. Thank you. Now, nine point five board calendar. Anything you want to add, or you should need to be taking all the people this day, this year, how is it? Uh superintendent update, nine point six.
I'm kind of sure we can update, I didn't see anything out to you because it's not a whole lot this time around. But uh targets on the building is moving along. We have uh a meeting tomorrow at one o'clock. Uh in reference to the remodeling job of the whole high school. And there's a specific uh request that we will make at that particular meeting with uh along with our representative from uh from Booker. Uh we hope to have a transitional, we hope to add on to the transitional plan that we've already sent out to you uh for our next meeting, maybe for a special meeting, those kind of things. Uh we also uh we're planning, making the plans for uh both bachelor and graduation at this point. We uh had a number of meetings with the. at this point, we, uh, had a number of meetings with the, with the committee members and administrators from, from both of the sites, and that's going pretty well. Uh, I think we will use the same format for bachelor, this year we used last year, and we're gonna pray that the weather's good, so we can go outside, we go outside, then the number of persons that, uh, students can invite will be un- unlimited, but, uh, I think we might even look at the, the mandate outside, even if we, I know that we do that, because that's usually when our largest prize of, of, of the year. Uh, you know, the governor's wife will be in to do a, a photo op. To do a book distribution, uh, sometime very soon. And, uh, uh, we have a copy of the book, if you want, if you want to see the book there. Uh, but also, Dr. Wallace and Hugle, they are also, uh, I think this will be the fourth year, maybe the fifth year today, have also donated books, which is, that, that's a good thing, because of the fact that, you know, we're trying to promote that our students read, 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 uh, more, because of the fact that, that's the key to it all. Uh, we, uh, talked to our elementary principals, and they're probably making contact with our parents, because of the fact that we really would like to see our summer program, uh, have at least an eighty percent participation. Because of the point, because of the fact that we just need to make up that time that dudes lost. Okay? I know it's a challenge, but, you know, on the other hand, uh, we can't put everything on COVID time, you got to find some way of working around the circumstances that we have, uh, provided, you know, those kinds of things. Uh, we are also in the process of, uh, when we meet with Marco tomorrow, I think you'll have some more information, as it relates to the, uh, spread season, reimbursement, and those kind of things. We appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule meeting on last week to get all those things on, or the, uh, I did, I was over there for a while today, I didn't have a chance to stay a whole lot of time, but the dough frying thing, so that's, that's a good thing, uh, so hopefully, we can get into time soon. If you notice, I think on the, uh, on the twelfth grade running house, the top is about two-thirds completed on it, so if the weather holds up, they'll finish with that top, probably, uh, they went thirty. I was over there once today, that's how it was going. But, but once they finish that top, now usually they work on Saturday and Sunday, so if the weather stays good, they should be pretty close to having a two running house top complete, uh, sometime this week. By the eight, eight forty?
Oh. Okay.
Okay, uh, about being on the cop grant, uh, you, you want to do it today?
Okay. Good evening, uh, President James, members of board, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDonald Green. Uh, so far on the cops grant, we had a meeting, uh, a couple weeks back with the Department of Justice, and we had to make some tweaks and adjustments to the plan that we had. Um, initially, was going away for the cops grant. Um, initially, we thought we could put in for a vehicle, and then a school resource officer, things like that, but there's another grant that we have to write in for to do that, so within that, we still want to go ahead and move ahead with some other things we had planned. So, last week, we met with Mr., uh, White on getting measurements and things going forward to put fencing around our, two of our elementary schools, which was McLaurin and West. Uh, we hadn't got back with him yet to get those numbers, I think it was, I think it was Wednesday when we contacted him?
He called me his boy, so he kept a note with supplies and all, and he will probably have it all, uh, till then, by Friday, he said.
Okay, because I did reach out and try to contact him, also by phone and text message. So, um, so once we get that done, we're gonna look at doing, you know, the going to aluminum fence around McLaurin, we're gonna make sure it don't look like a, a prison, so we're not going across the front, um, also with fixing some fencing that's already in place at West. Uh, we did put up the fence in the back, and it helped us tremendously, so we look for this additional fencing to do a lot, uh, for us as far as securing our campuses and ensuring the safety of our students and staff. Uh, other than. Oh, cameras at Fallon, we did go ahead and include that in our plan, so, um, Fallon will be covered also, along with the rest of our schools.
Also, I, I passed out to you, I'm sorry, this is a copy of the new pay sale, everyone should have it, okay? Now, if, uh, does not include the local supplement, that's only straight state money, state money, based on the number of years of experience, it was wanting to add our supplement on there, uh, that would be, you know, a nice time.
On a side note, I just want to thank, we had, uh, on last Thursday, we had a law enforcement roundtable on campus, and we had FBI, uh, from this area, I think he's housed in Jackson, uh, sheriffs, we had, uh, chiefs from all over the Southwest Mississippi area, and I want to thank Mr. Davis for coming on behalf of the National School District, he was the only, uh, resource, uh, enforcer from a school district, and so what they learned from him, they are taking back to their area, and so, uh, this summer, we will have a retreat with just the school resource officers and, uh, chiefs and sheriffs from this area, so they can kind of network and see what they need to do to help, uh, school districts with law enforcement, because one or two people just cannot do an entire district. So, thank you, Mr. Davis, for showing up. And he said he was all ears, and he was just soaking everything in, but they learned a lot from him as well, because he got up and spoke on behalf of this district, and I was really proud of him. And he was there.
All right.
That's right, you do anything. Uh, that's right, you can leave. No, 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 I ain't going to, thank you.
But also, um, I had had a conversation with Mr. Davis, and I was going to, Mr. Butcher and the board, when we go on our regions, and our, uh, you know, I think with, uh, Dr. Robinson, you know, we went to Arkansas that time, and that's all they talked about was the officer in school, you know, Dr. Robinson, you know, me and you were back there talking, and everybody just took their own business, and what we were saying. But, uh, we was talking that loud, between, you know, the other three hundred people just stopped, even in front of president, turned around and, and wanted to hear what we had to say, but anyway, uh, Mr. Butcher, I think that, uh, Mr. Davis probably, uh, do good too, if he was to go to, like the ones we'd be having in the region.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I was thinking maybe it'd be nice for him to go, we got one that we're supposed to go to in July, but he was telling me about the camera system that we had, and I would like for him to explain, remember you were talking about you can just put something in and, and that camera system would look for that certain thing?
So, the, uh, camera system that we have out at Necker, is the one that we would like to implement the rest of the district. Um, it, it has, uh, it's by Vigilon, and it has analytics, um, and mic and tied to the current system that we have, but really we want to move to this, because it has where we can just type in pink jacket, and everywhere Mr. Fields went today, the juice gonna come up, and, um, you know, it come with the infrared, uh, ring lighting, if we don't order it with it, we can always go back and have it added to it. Uh, it's something that, that's, it's cost-effective, because we might spend out on the front end, but it's easily updated, and it'll save us money on the back end. So, um, I think it's a good system, they love it out there, Colleen, it's something that Colleen and Weston is also using at, uh, other collegiate campuses throughout the state, so I think, you know.
Same, because we're gonna, we have a new school in the high school.
Right, same, same system, you know, Fallon and everywhere else, so, uh, you know, it, it's good, you can track backpacks, anything that we, we want to look into, um, it has, uh, capability to have two hundred and seven degree angles to three sixty degree angles. Uh, if you ever been into the cafet- what they call cafeteria in Matneve, it almost looks like a, a fire alarm, and, uh, but it's actual camera, and it sees three sixty, everything in the room, so.
You know, that has helped us with our crime on campus, we have it, and, uh, cars that shouldn't be on campus that have been, uh, I don't want to say expelled, expelled off campus, but cannot come to campus. They go right to them, pick it up.
And see, that's, uh, that's something that we, that can't go along with this system, uh, tag reader. Now, I'm not sure if we are getting that at the hospital, the new school, I'm not sure, uh, but that'll be a conversation, but I know we did, you know, discuss, uh, tag reader, and we could, we had to do the same thing.
And this will go along with our participation in the state's inside, uh, pro- uh, program, this is a safety platform that our district has opted into, and so they want to give us digitized emergency operation plans, digitized, uh, uh, school, uh, uh, layouts and so forth, so all of these are going to, uh, you know, enhance the safety, uh, the safety features that we have in our school district.
And Ms. McDonald, I think you said they'll give us cameras.
Yeah, they're also gonna give us cameras, and one camera for each of, uh, our school campuses, and, and one for our central off- central office.
Because they, when we went to DC, I went to DC for that national school board, and that's what they were saying, they could just say gray shirt, and it would pick up everybody in the gray shirt on, and like you say, through campuses, until you weed out which.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good.
So, what were you on?
I just want you to, that's good, okay? Nine point seven, school board reports, Dr. Robinson, have anything?
I just want to tell everybody, thank you again for the work and dedication to the National School District, and please stay safe, because COVID has not left.
I have nothing, Mr. Butcher.
No comment today. Great job.
And me? Just a great meeting. Okay? Now, we're ready to go into closed determination.
I'll ask a question, we'll have a closed determination.
Who's in favor? Uh, bad to five zero, we have closed determination.